Work session, can I get a roll call please?
Hi, Mayor King.
Here.
Council Naya, here. Council Newberry's, here. Council Nemo, here. Council Manu, here. They are for you.
This is like Pat's favorite thing, numbers.
Numbers. Okay, so a couple things. Uh, this is the parks total budget and kind of where we are. And please, Sean. Do you want to win some?
Yes, I'm good with that.
Alright, um, so one of the first ones that I wanted to talk about, just to give you guys a quick update on, um, the
Sorry.
Oh, you're fine. The parks projects, um, which are set for substantial completion later this month. Um, I had a little bit of a heart palpitation a couple of weeks ago. When the contractor had indicated that something at City Lake was not going to be in for another five weeks. I'm like, we are weak as that day. Um, so since then, I asked Scott to stay, uh, on for this conversation. Uh, we're pushing them very hard to make sure that they're open. As of last, well, as of Friday, uh, we are looking at an eight, oh, sorry. August first, um, opening for all three sites. It's not very far away, so, um, yeah, Scott, you have other?
That's the plan.
It's the plan, it's the plan. That's the plan.
Uh, there, the landscaping's not all going to be done because the planting period just didn't, they weren't ready in time to get the growth up. To get the plants planted, the grass is not all set. I think they have the ability to get all the components in place if they can get the material here in time. That's going to be a lot of work. Uh, what they're telling us over the last week is that they've gotten delivery dates on the surf at the rec complex. Uh, the, uh, grand pavilion and amphitheater items are on the live on order. Uh, the anchor bolts did get here on Friday, my understanding, for, uh, the amphitheater. They are scheduled for that tomorrow is what they're telling me. Uh, excuse me, that's incorrect, they're going to set up tomorrow, four months, eight Thursday, and then going to city lake concrete tomorrow. The splash pad is done, we're trying to get that started up now, uh, playground, um, the last little pieces of the rec complex. Not much left to do, just like some hand held miscellaneous items and so on, I think George's done. Maybe they have a couple of things to do. Biggest concern was the tank getting a, getting their maintenance stuff up over at City Lake. They tell us that they found another maybe extra of it for the tank, they were going to get that here this week. They're saying they'll get it here by the fifteenth to install on the sixteenth and seventeenth. We'll see, I mean, at this point, they got a dress up, they're telling us it's, it's true, and so we grew. I've been going out there daily, not doing progress, not doing a lack of progress as well. That's just as important, uh, as the document progress, just that they're not guys here. And we, I haven't seen, they did have a lot of people there on the pet rec complex on Friday, but short of that, I mean, it's, you're seeing two to three guys max on site, so that's very concerned over the last month or so. We kind of point that back to, they had a project manager, we could have a little another opportunity and don't feel that the transition is done. Doesn't have the ability to come in and, uh, try to dig the pieces from down.
Do you think with the current punch list that they would?
Can we do, they can do the August first? So for contractual requirements, they only have to have the punch list established and check.
Right.
They get forty-five days to close up the punch list, get all the warranty documents in order, and finally get out of there before you're susceptible to potential damages associated with final completion.
Yeah, I, I feel pretty good on rec complex, we're really down to just punch list items with the, the parking lot, um, this week. Um, rec complex, I feel really good on, um, City Lake is really hit or miss, it was supposed to be a short mobilization. Now that they have this holding thing, um, I feel a little bit better that we'll be able to get that date. City Park, I saw some one of our questions.
City Park is the business for this room.
Yeah.
Because of the landscape or because of?
Really, they're self-inflicted problems, they're, it's all great. Amphitheater and the wrong orientation is a longer issue, so that's been ripped out. Their reprocesses that were being, or that's what come, that's their own replacement, it's been missed this week. Um, they had the roof panels, the pavilion, they, their supplier put the metal, the roof panels underneath the columns. They had damage here shipping, so they had to refabricate all of those things. That's really been the, the two longest lead time items that I've been concerned. Fester's in, uh, all the plumbing should be hooked up. Uh, I know the power is on, at least, they had the players were all for goblin, I went to their day. All the power should be running in there. And cleanliness, just getting cleaned up, we saw, making it look like a finished product is going to be, well, I don't know if it's going to be completely done by the, the first, but I think it'll be open and you, you know, it will be open and used by the company. With the understanding today, there's going to be landscaping, grass, it's going to probably be some signs that people off that.
I just feel that because virtually we're going, I know it's not summer, but you know.
I know.
For me, when Fourth of July is over, we're on the downhill side.
That's right, school, so.
There were, there were many conversations, Scott knows, I've probably been asking since you. Like, when, when are we going to open, when are we going to?
You're training really well.
They've had, they've had, you know, they're still within their contractual limits, not, not too concerned. There was a time period I thought we had City Park over in July.
The signage will be also in high, which they'll, after the final approval, I think finalized and approved all the designs. Um, just waiting for the updated, nice and thorough process to get those changes. So that, that will be one item that will not be done by August first.
So when we get these timber October landscaping, planting season, uh, will they come back out in high, are they?
Yes. They're actually working, they're maybe potentially going to have a high receipt prior to that. Um, they're going back and forth, but there's a contractor on, on X or Y issues for that. We asked about, had asked about that day, and they said they're still in conversation. That's kind of worked their way up from the day-to-day project, even this now, and they're here, so it's, you know, he's having conversations with, uh, some.
Questions?
I just wanted you guys to know what's on our plate in the next.
I'm really not having questions, I just told you.
We do that.
We did, we did establish on Friday that we are now at a point where you're allowing us to mow, so at least we're going to get.
So we're, worst case scenario.
No, I don't agree with nothing.
Don't allow us.
I agree.
Worst case scenario, they don't get City, or City Park done, that we can't open August first. Can we open up the rest of it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I see.
I mean, good, you've seen it anyway, just not legally, I'm not, but you know what? Yeah, let it go.
Yeah, I don't see any concern with rec complex, City Lake, as long as they get that thing, no concern. The City Park is going to be a push. I think if they take that, it's going to give them to a hands down, but there will be some things.
I'm just going to get your test today, but apparently you're on the one door. Yeah, I'd say it's September, so.
It'll be hot.
This week, so we'll, we'll see. Okay, any other questions for Scott on his side?
Thank you, Jeff.
Did you have any money on the pool station for us, Pat?
See, or anything?
I mean, we're in a good place on that, we're, we got about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of unallocated funds that can go through potential hazard upgrades there. I know at one point there was a
Jeff keeps calling me a way until.
Desire for a second fix, and there was some electrical items that were pointed out for your videos. So we can address some of those items as well. But like to get into it, let them get started and then get through some of the whole risky stuff and some kind of activity. But that hundred and twenty thousand allocated money is already, I don't have any, anything that you plans to use it so that, that. I feel comfortable with you doing that, I mean, we're well over ten percent of the contingency, which is a good place.
A lot of time in this one, that's.
That's the thing is, I mean, we did do all the day mit, so then there could still be stuff when they pull some of those ceilings down, I wasn't seeing. Once you get to the day, I feel a little, a couple of all of that's a little bit of that funding.
Yes.
I think we're in a good place on that.
Alright, okay, so next up is, as we are getting closer to, um, the opening of these, um, close the conversation about, um, facility fees and rental fees. And, oh, I'm going to shut that hole. I said, I was, I was having, um, um, things today. Uh, I may go back for the recipe, guys. What do you know about me, but, like, it's like all of it, basically.
I've got mine.
Oh, right.
Yeah, we have one. I just didn't grab mine down here.
Well, I know. My ones, okay, good, good for you. Good for you. So I broke this down into different categories, one of them being pavilion rental fees. Right now, all of them are forty-five dollars. Um, our recommendation is with some of the newer amenities that are at each of the sites, changing what that rate structure is. Um, included in that packet, I have different rates for different shelters. Um, so like at City Lake, I actually was rocking the rounds arm one, um, just because it is older, so needs to be repaired. But I did increase lions, even though not changing the lion shelter, the amenities that are there are now newer. Uh, and then changing to a, a separate fee for resident versus non-resident. Then at City Park, um, where that amphitheater pavilion is, it's not going to have a whole lot of tables on it. We were really looking at that from like a smaller roche party rental. Um, and so I was actually thinking maybe just like forty-five dollars. Um, and then if we were looking at community event rental, was making it a hundred dollars because then you're going to have to basically rent out. Um, that grand pavilion, I was looking at increasing that to seventy-five dollars for residents. And then technically, we had a rate in there for, uh, the popper pavilion at the rec complex. And I recommended just keep it at fifty dollars. Um, it can't hold a whole lot of picnic tables, and so I can't imagine a lot of people that need to rent it out, we don't regularly rent it.
Were you talking about above the concession stand?
We used to rent that because of playgrounds during tax year, and you could use it as a kids' party, that kind of thing. Now we've got one down the hill, but it's still available.
Yeah, so it's available, but I think in the future we'll be in here on a t basis of when you can rent it, because you're not going to want everything else going on. Uh, so I just wanted feedback on, do you guys think those are reasonable, not reasonable? We'll come back and actually formalize that, the fee schedule in the future, but.
Well, I didn't like the hundred dollar concession, one event, like you explained, it's for, it's going to be.
Well, I was like, there's no way in reality, so like if you're, in terms of if somebody is saying, I want to put on an event, there's no longer really parking there technically than like.
It is going to be like.
It's, it really is kind of.
I think it just needs to be more specific than
Okay.
Or, I don't know, because it looks like twenty-five dollars to do an event, I have to spend a hundred, but it's because, yeah, so that makes sense now.
Okay.
Um, I also think it might be a good idea to start, especially for the amphitheater thing, and just because, um, the building, and I'm getting ahead. Nonprofits, are we giving them a discount?
That's a question I always have, but.
I mean, my opinion is, I think we should have to pay, but not the hundred dollars, you know, because.
Well, then we, I, in my opinion, then I think we just said that it was over rapture.
Exactly.
Okay, that, that's my take. I guess we do run the risk, because we've seen this in the past with council where we've had private individuals want to rent those types of things. Like for concerts, but it's just not a super large space, like can't imagine that. Unless we only say it's only, that is only available to nonprofits or public events.
I think that I like the idea of the different fees for different facilities because they are different.
Yes, I agree with that.
I think that moving into that, whoever would be in charge of that project, I'm talking about the website. The Parks Park needs to have good pictures of these things, a good description of what they get with it. And then that fee, and I mean, I'm even okay saying that we will give a percentage discount to local not-for-profits for events that are
Right.
Not that, I'm just picking on you. Not that, not that she's the theater guild and she's going to have a private event, but she says, I mean, we're not-for-profit, we want to have to.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
This, because then that takes away from, well, this council said I could have, way this council didn't, this group did. We just said it, and this is what it is.
I, I will tell you, Michelle, I kind of wrestled with that one, because I'm like, I can also, one part of my brain can hear the council saying, but we appreciate those things, that's one less thing that we have to do, and one more thing that can be community-based. And so I, there was one part of me that just said, or we're just going to say no fee for it if it's open to the public. But then I was like, oh, uh, yeah.
I think it should be, and, yeah, I mean, as far as all city properties, I mean, if you're a nonprofit, fifty percent off or whatever, or whatever we decide for it to be, just instead of, well, instead of people coming in here asking to have the path this, this, and then to free to wait this fee, wait.
We have in the past for facilities, I think, one point, I don't know if it's accurate or not, we had it where it said nonprofit rate was fifty percent off.
Of what?
Well, we just need to start.
Well, I would, I would like somewhere, website, whatever it is, also say that all of these things are free for the community to use on a first come, first served basis.
Right.
This is rental, you know, but I like to say that, because some people really look at it as, oh, I'm used to that, I have to pay that.
You have to.
And they don't have to, they can take the chance, and that way they understand.
I re, I remember an individual who was once on council saying, like, I have to pay a fee for this. Some cities do, some cities don't, in my mind, I was looking at, our park tax levy doesn't bring in that much revenue, so I'm like, like, I just need to make sure, like.
We're not charging for use, we're charging for it, you get to reserve it, and you're guaranteed.
Guaranteed, exactly. And I, and like during that time, it was like, on Thursday day, I'm like, you're probably pretty good, I'm going to say.
The lowers.
Lowers compare, but it just comes in like how much effort do you have in?
Back when I coached, we did daytime practices, I didn't rent the fields, because I knew nobody could be out there during the week, during the day. I know if it was evening, I was going to have to rent it.
Is there any way to? There's on, I, you know, like, to know if somebody has it rented is the thing.
We'll, we'll get there.
Okay.
We're going to get there.
That's the thing, it's like.
We're going to get there.
Somewhere, probably now, oh, nobody's got it. Because I've had to kick people out, because I went to City Lake, and I, and I got there, and there was a big party with streamers, I'm like, nope, bye-bye. Take the streamers with you.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get there. Okay, do I hear consensus on that fifty percent nonprofit rate?
Bye.
I'm fine with that, I'm fine with it.
Alright.
Saves like a lot, right, yeah?
A lot of times we just say agree.
And I don't like that, I'm tired of the same people coming back every time you did it first.
So the real, I'm, I'm going to skip around and actually go to field rentals at the rec complex. Um, I quote what the current rates are in there, um, just for your reference, but more focused on what our proposal is for tournaments. Um, this came from Jeff, who's been working with, uh, Sports America, and kind of checking what the rates are in other jurisdictions. Um, and this is kind of how we see this right now. The City where we take our earnings for concessions, um, baseball and softball at fifty-five dollars per field, per game. Uh, so per tournament, we're really looking at probably three thousand dollars or something like that, based on how many games you have this game. We would like to put additional, and I don't have the amount yet, an increase in off-season rentals. Jeff and I talked through this a lot, because we have those flex fields. And originally, whenever he was thinking about it, he was like, well, they're not available for baseball, softball, when we've already taken the temporary fencing down. Well, they're mine for the right price. So again, because we don't always program on the weekends, there may be windows where somebody wants to have a fall tournament, but we want regularly set up for it, but we'll need to account for our staff time that would be incurred to be equipped on. So that's kind of what we were thinking, and we'll define like kind of what those seasons are, so it's clear. Uh, but in-season would be fifty-five per field, per game, and then off-season would be.
I think that's more like a private team, rather than a, a rec teams, but like a private club team, was going to rent a field for a Thursday night, if we don't have games.
Specifically, I went to a Raytown business, they had in-season and off-season different fee schedules. So I do remember Raytown specifically.
Somebody, somebody else did too, that I can look at.
We've seen a lot more of this, like, uh, Central Bank Gardens up in North Liberty, on the west side of Liberty. They've got flex fields like these years, for soccer, also flex the baseball, and they've got regular season, offseason, makes a lot better.
Uh, so then looking at soccer and football, we, yeah, go ahead.
I just got to wrap my brain around this, so, uh, the rec teams have to pay to break the fields?
We'll have our rec program, and they get scheduled and populated first, so that's what I think priority first is going to be, sets scheduled Monday through Thursday, at least certain time.
This would be just like, I have a softball team.
It could be, or it could be, I'm a tournament organizer, and this weekend we want to drop all the fields. Or we only need three fields, or something like that, but, yeah.
For tournaments, you, you think those prices are the same?
That's what, uh, I actually reached out to Frank Lloyd Park Community Summit.
Okay.
Their M R U with, uh, Sports America is exactly the same, per game, per field.
I think so.
Well, I think, I think they have a, I think they do a lot more for the season, like a lot.
I think, I think the other for us is, especially as we're going to be in the traction realm for a little while, and not, what I'm still hopeful we can do are satellite locations to larger tournaments too. I wanted to make sure that we're going to be in a mobile zone.
There's a lot, um, major organs in, in Sports America, Sports America's one, two, with Frank Lloyd, that part, I'm sure. Like Perfect Game, they've actually taken over three and two, so they, they do a lot of those. There's a lot, this is all baseball, so I don't, I don't know this all whole, they're all together, Perfect Game. Yep, and then Tracy Sports, all those places, so they're all part of the U-Trip umbrella.
Right, okay.
Um, there's Casey Sports, that big one, because they'll do, um, the shot mission, uh, park, the one in Togo Valley, they'll do, uh, sort of three and two. They'll, then they have some in, uh, Riverside, and they populate all around it.
Right.
So they're big ones, and they want to cover the whole city, like not just in one area, so that's the one I'm trying to reach out to, I'm very responsible for that.
I know like ASA, they do their fall tournaments, their nationals, their world series kind of things, and softball. If they are breaking into hoop springs parks, or there's like two tiny fields in this one thing, so you might be able to get some of those.
I've got emails out to ASA right now, trying to get that answered, because softball, they have more games, they have more teams, it's, it's up. Better end of the picture, so.
In softball, they travel all over the place, I mean, we're going out to like Centennial Park in, in Garden, or for a game.
Yep, so they make a pause usually two times on Friday, all day Saturday, and then they turn on Sunday, it's like four to six for softball, and then those are Thursday nights. One through Friday, all day, Saturday, all day.
Okay, so then soccer and football, just because those are on typically two baseball fields, we were looking at one ten per field, per game. And again, same thing, if we have fencing set up this time, then if the off-season, we needed to hold it out for whatever reason.
Soccer could do, or, or, who's going to do half, I would say, that you do the same things as baseball side, and we're doing half field.
Does C C P A and West Central, whatever the, the organizations are for football now, do they pay for those things?
Yes, yeah, uh, right now, we're, it's just a puzzle on these, this is what we're going through.
Okay.
Um, we've got a contract with them, and others teams were, uh, that's going to get revised right now, but they pay a flat rate for the whole season, and we kind of throw it around this way. Really, just practice on, we're not going to host games here, because I know it's interesting, actually, those will be at high school.
Um, same thing, flight football, we were looking at fifty-five dollars per field, per game, in this case, we're looking at that. Same thing, if we have fencing out, then those are going to be, yeah. Any questions, thoughts on that? Okay, alright, so then I'm going to go back to a more complicated one, which is kind of, we've not had pickleball here before. And do, what are the council's thoughts?
A lot of lords have a plan.
Yeah, we're going to do it. Um, what are the council's thoughts on whether the pickleball courts could be reserved? I'm not talking about tournaments at this point, but really just on daily weeks, do you have the ability, do you think we should have the ability to reserve them? Um, on like an hour basis?
Rent them for a certain.
Oh, I, I.
The long third.
I do it with, with a fee. Um, so as we've talked about internally, we have six courts at rec complex, two at City Park. What we were thinking, open to any idea, is make four of them at rec complex with the ability to be reserved. And then that leaves two that are always open for first come, first served, and then the two, which really tends to be the pickleball court, at City Park will also always be first come, first served, unless there's tournament, that's a.
And we have no basis for understanding historically for us, but that's, I think that's a good start, and then we just adjust. Because we don't, we don't.
We don't, we, yeah, uh, Jeff reached out to others that have pickleball courts, and they've said, yes, they are booked. Any opportunity we can get to that.
The model I've kind of, based on this, I don't think it's current, and they do, so they have some of their courts are rentable. They have daytime in the early evening hours, it's all rentable, they have, uh, leagues in the evenings on weeknights, and they have terms on weekends. He's up there for a hundred some time, so they're always available.
So we, I, I kind of built this model for, I'm going to call it prime time hours and non-prime time hours. So daytime hours, um, during the week, I was just wondering, like, ten bucks. Um, and then prime time, which is after five o'clock, and then both weekends, twenty dollars for residents, and then thirty dollars for non-residents. Um, part of the reason I really, really wanted to have this conversation is about how do you know if they're booked or not? And when Jeff came to me with a solution like, I'm going to be able to, I said, thanks, like, I gotta know. And based on our estimates, uh, realistically, and I do mine very conservative, like, Andy, I go about was conservative. We think we have a potential for one thousand off, off of those reservations, and I was not booking it the whole time. Um, so that's kind of what we were.
Off, uh, pickleball.
Just pickleball.
Oh, just pickleball.
Just pickleball. Uh, and I said, like, oh, but during the day, maybe it wouldn't be as full.
I don't know, because she's got a lot of seniors that.
I know, but I was like, I don't know. Um, so anyway, that's what gets me into kind of what that, that reservation system looks like, but I feel very comfortable with that. But I just need to know from you guys, if you feel comfortable doing that, and all those rates, what you're paying.
I can.
Uh, these are, so I sent it out to the K C original director association, and it's kind of like the midline of everybody. There's some of you forty bucks an hour residents, there's some of you, uh, just first come, first served only, um, so they're, they're all in that, they're twenty.
I feel like if you get it too high, we're going to get land blasted by so many.
You think I take them too high? I, I tried to always take it from a reasonableness approach, and I was doing the same thing, like, I was like, okay, I view some of the nighttime rentals as I know, I want to work out at six o'clock, this is my workout, I want to work out at six o'clock, and I'm going to go to the front, right? And I want to know that it's there, because I don't have extra time. Um, and I was doing that, like, how much will I pay for some workout? Uh, it can be any rate you guys think is reasonable. I don't have.
Remember, you're also talking about, what, twenty bucks for two people, maybe four people, and they're doing it, and they're only each paying five bucks. So this isn't a single person doing something.
I know, they're, like you said earlier, they are first come, first served until they're rented, and they get first priority. So I mean, it could be, somebody goes out there, and all six courts are just first come, first served. You set up a waitlist, and you kind of just go through it, and you want to return it, you go through it, but if you want to, you want to jump that line, you're going to have to sort of.
Right, I was, I was of the opinion that they should just all be first come, so, but then I'm like. Right, I was, I was of the opinion that they should just all be first come, so then I'm like, but if I show up so many times.
And can't.
Would I pay twenty dollars to reserve it?
Yeah. Absolutely.
So there, there, I flipped my script right now. How would that work? Let's, so, well, you just, your comment, you said about, you know, they're first come, first served, so I'm on a. I guess you're saying these two specific courts are first come, first served. Everything else is rental.
Okay, one through six, one, two, all those first come, first served, three through six are able to be reserved.
And if they're not reserved, anybody?
If they're open, nobody's there.
I mean, if I can only play for thirty minutes because it's rented in a half an hour, then.
Yeah.
Yeah. Play for thirty minutes.
I'm just, I, I'm, I'm trying to track here that if I'm on court number four. And it was, I got it because it was first come, first served, wasn't rented, and now somebody goes online and rents it, so they could come down and say.
So we can do, we can set fences within that of like, how much time do you need to get before?
Start an hour or an hour beforehand.
Yeah. Like you can say like, I want to rent it, like, oh yeah, like, you can't.
It just blocks your route. You can't rent it an hour.
Right now.
Yes, you can't do it right this.
Okay, that's where I was trying.
That's what I was, I was falling apart.
That's what I do, it's all like.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing. The way I enter the system is you can't show up at five twenty-five and rent from five twenty-five to six twenty-five.
Oh, yeah.
You show up and you look at it and you can go from six to seven. You can go from five to six and you lose twenty-five minutes and you kind of rest the other front end. So it's, there's a block.
And all that's gonna have to be in writing.
Yeah.
I mean, because.
So that's the, this is the app that he's getting.
Got a handy-dandy hat.
I just feel the, all of the devices over there, the wifi thing and all of the.
You guys have.
Yeah, I've got the TV going always.
You guys have no idea, whenever I say my brain has a lot in it right now, like it will go from like something really big picture down to. Here's what the sign is going to say and here's exactly where it's gonna go and, uh, even just kind of like writing some of this out, like, oh yeah, and then we need to consider this and so.
Well, I'm ecstatic if you're gonna get some pickleball messages because I don't wanna go out there looking like a fool.
Oh, just join the crowd.
I'll be right there with you. Got a couple of clients that said they'll teach me.
I know, if you have any teachers up someone that.
Well, make sure they're all, they're all your friends, because you don't want them to take the ball too.
We have.
No, my friends will be the ones that are like. They're probably, they're probably, oh, like pickleball.
Yeah, pickleball, pickleball.
Oh, you know? No, but I can add that to our list of.
Yeah, I mean, I think, cause that's something I have no clue. I, I just play it like.
Here's how you can, yeah. Okay, I'll add my sign.
So this is the app that we've actually, uh, I went through, I can't tell you how many different ones, this is the one we like the best. Rec Technologies is the company, they are, what they kind of promote is they're mobile first. They are not a website that also has mobile capability. They are, it's set up by the people that came from Google and Uber. So they are strictly for app ease of functionality and end user function. So to answer your earlier question, talking about each one has its own landing page, these, like this image right here comes from a, a list of thumbnails. When you click on it and it brings up the description of it, how many guests are available, you can put, all these are customizable fields, you can put whatever one in there. How many pick details, how many chairs are available, how close the bathrooms are, everything is built in there. So it's all stuff that when, if we get the approval, I'll sit down with them and after a fair week, go through and build this.
Oh, come on, let's just do it this way.
I'm not even that working, I'm just having some weird stuff this week.
Come on, hang over here.
Yep.
Um, but, so this is what it looks like for bookings. This is what the customer's gonna see on their mobile phone. Um, reservations, they are to the point where you can actually on your, on your watch, walk up and, and tap the reader and it will actually charge you right then and there through your, through, through your wallet on your watch. Don't look in the show watch. You can, you can get into a pool, she can do pickleball, do whatever you want to from your watch and your phone either one.
Oh, I know.
It's so seamless, it really is.
I have no.
Okay, thank you.
I'd probably buy one under, I didn't.
Well, I know.
I didn't buy a real one, but I, I'll cheap money it here, so.
They also, uh, have A I in the backgrounds on, on our side. Um, wherever a customer sets an account, it's gonna be, John King is the math, is the holder of the account. He's gonna list all those kids under there, his wife under there, everybody's gonna be built under there. It's gonna have all your demographic information of. Male and age and address and zip code and everything. So the system will recognize automatically if you're resident, non-resident, just whenever you go actually to scan the code, it knows where you're coming from. It knows where your demographic, so we can actually promote and plan and, and, and do, uh, like email campaigns to certain demographics. Where we, we know that the senior population is the one that's blowing us up the most, we can offer discounts for a senior league or something along those kinds of. Get some of that retro and going. It also has reports for everything you could possibly want for all those demographics too. It'll show you what time of day is most popular. It'll show you everything, like how, how often it's viewed, how often it's looked at. It's crazy going ahead on that side of this thing. This. Um, so Rec and Tech, what this, for me, what this mostly is, is for my self-environment, we're setting up a rec program. They, it makes, it all integrates together and we can actually track field usage. It has resource accountability, so we know for sure when our rec program is using fields. Um, it hasn't got it yet. They're actually working on a integration with our lighting's vendor right now. To where when somebody rents the flammable field from eight to ten P M, then it automatically will trigger the lights to be on during that timeframe and so it fits on both sides.
Sweet deal. You can turn them off.
I was gonna say, if they are on right now a lot, uh, that would be huge.
Right now, it's all on my phone, I'm typing in all the scheduling and the whole nine yards, but this is, I've actually put those two together in the same room, so I'm actually working on that integration right now. Um, the other really, really cool thing that I like that's gonna save a lot of time for environment mostly is. Once the, the users get put in here and she has the schedules built, if we need to move the game from Yule Field to Girls North. Then all she does is just drag and drop and pull it over and it sends that communication to everybody. Without her having to make a phone call to coaches, to, to ring more, cause that's where the other team's at, it, it goes across the, the whole map of everybody's ability to that, that platform.
Alright, just, just tell us how much it costs. Let's just.
He sold it already.
I know.
Awesome. I did see the price.
It's been.
Well, you ready for the?
It's been us into the.
Right center.
Yeah. So, okay, so it is, now I don't remember.
Eight thousand dollars.
One time.
One time fee for the integration setup, usage, to build all your facilities, build all your maps, everything's GPS located. So you can actually look in there what field one is at the hill and know that you're going to the dirt field. It, it has it all built into it. Um, so eight thousand dollars for the setup and nine thousand dollars a year thereafter.
So right, right now, we're, right now, we're spending, yeah, we're spending, we're spending two thousand per year right now on a.
Twenty-one hundred.
Twenty-one hundred, um, to be part of the clunky system we have right now that isn't as user friendly. Team size.
Team size.
Um, but if this makes you feel even better, um, Jeff did look into the system that Harrisonville uses right now and it was more than that cost.
It's like thirteen thousand a year for annual and it's more for the initial setup, so.
So the first year seventeen thousand dollars. So, so now we have to get that approved in the budget.
Yeah, so with, that's why I was like, pickleball is like a big piece of this. Um, again, this is all speculative based on how many tournaments we think we can have. And whether we're going to rent or whether we think we're going to, uh, realistically, this thing will clearly take itself back within two years. Uh, whether we can do it before April first is a question.
Will they, um, set, set up? We're gonna be in August. Will they pro-rate this year?
I'll ask that question. Till we actually get to the tournament.
Yeah, see if they'll pro-rate the first year and then just know that we're gonna hit that up in the next.
For them, maybe that we just start August one and that's our, our recycle.
Our recycle gear.
Yeah, that's why I was saying, usually apps are like, yeah, that's my guess.
To answer your other questions.
That is not how my fire department works. That's why I asked. They pro-rate ours and then it's annual. But we asked to get all our stuff on the same.
I don't have it on these slides, but we, we were talking earlier about how you know what's rented, how you know what's not. They for, I think it's thirty dollars per sign for a small sign or eighty dollars a sign for a big sign, they will actually map out everything for us to have. Court one will can have its own Q R code, has another Q R code that you, on the bottom of it, that you can actually put that goes for two rules, a procedure, terms, conditions, restrictions, all that kind of stuff. Look at that Q R code and it actually brings you up the calendar of that one court for your law. Um, so you can look at it and be like, I'll walk up.
Somebody's coming.
I mean, so instead, I can go to course three instead.
I'm on court three, yeah. It'll tell you if I need to bounce, it can tell if I need to go ahead and reserve because there's, you know, um, there's other ones that are reserved right behind it, something like that. Um, it's not just for pickleball courts, so we can do it for buildings, we can do it for more buildings.
I'm gonna say, can we do the buildings too?
Every building we want to, every facility we have, we have one of those signs on the, on the each entry point and we do the same thing. I can do it. Reserve right down there, we're just seeing what the availability is. Not having to contact Nikki at the front desk and then us have to go out and get a sign on the brand's availability and all that kind of stuff.
Alright, well, let's, I'll say, let's do this.
Check it out.
Yeah.
Do what you do.
I, I, I.
You think it would be worth the seventeen thousand for this fall?
I think so.
Okay.
I think with the craze of pickleball, it will save us countless headaches and countless.
Yeah, I, I will, I will tell you, Jeff was ready to do this, but, but, yeah, a, a little bit of it. Uh, we've already had legal look at the contract here, a few changes to it. I just would felt a lot better than I do. But, um, I had the authority to sign it.
He's already started.
So we have the money to.
Yeah, I'm on it.
Yeah, I mean, it's so. Cause now, it, I mean, we do, Amy and I talked about it. Um, her recommendation was that just for that first year, if the revenue targets don't hit it. Then it doesn't come out of the park fund. She was looking at either general and the park pays it back. Or sometimes you can do capital for my sales backs on technology. Um, I looked at the park fund, I think it's. I mean, seventy thousand, it has a hundred and ninety thousand, a hundred and ninety thousand in there, fun balance, so I think they can take it. Uh, that is, it's the cleanest way to do it. So I feel.
I would say I, I would like to keep it clean so you don't have anybody.
Yep.
Right.
I am into that.
I think it can, I think it can handle it.
Then let's, uh, let's roll this out so that all of the city staff know how to help people navigate through it and get on it. So that when people are like, hey, I don't, I can't get this on my phone, we end up with.
Even us, I would really like, I mean, seriously, having, moving your calls to say.
That would be good.
Um, one of the other things that I, from all of this, is I want to have this conversation now was even as, if, if the Rec Complex is ready to be open on August first. This may not be set up yet, but at least we can communicate the reservation is coming soon in August, September, whatever. That way it doesn't look like after the fact, we're trying to like, figure out how.
I've actually helped her, the council manager that I've been talking to the most, she said, if we can get an answer tomorrow, she can get our facilities for at least the pickleball courts and tennis courts set up before. I was on her July twenty-first. That week.
Sweet.
She said that she can get just those up. If I have a full functionality, we can do the reservation links and things on, like on that line. And then everything else will follow in time for winter sports, there's actually.
That's awesome.
Keep rolling and buzzing up.
Amy, keep that one forward, don't let that.
Alright, okay, alright, there's that one. Alright, um, next park update.
It's a huge win.
Next park update is not a fun one. Um, back on the swimming.
I gotta go.
I know, I think we're done. Um, is the swimming pool. Um, I mentioned to you guys that we were trying to find, um, some water loss that was occurring. Um, good news, we found it. Okay, pretty much. Um, yeah, so you wanna talk about what you guys found, what's running the best way?
So, uh, actually, you know the numbers as far as gallons of loss.
So roughly, I believe we were losing about fifteen thousand gallons per day. Uh, well, no, no, take that back, not losing. Fifteen thousand more, no, fifteen thousand was going through the meter. Now, that, there is normal consumption that occurs, so those are two different ratings.
Some of that's in there from the slide or.
Or, or restaurant.
Correct. Um, but whatever we were seeing, that we had four inches of loss within the pool every night, that's what we were going through, that's what kind of got us triggered. We, uh, worked with Casey guy and kind of making up a plan of how to troubleshoot and investigate. We've been for three weeks, maybe four weeks, we've been doing all these different tests where we isolate certain systems, shut certain valves off. And we're doing all of our due diligence, we have exactly where it's coming from. Um, the two suspects that we have, that we've actually got one of them kind of diminished right now because. The, uh, three fountains that come up by themselves, they're on the west edge of the zero entry pool. Um, not the park fountains, but there's a three that have multiple sprays come up. Those three, uh, we're accounting for about an inch and a half, two inches of loss about a night. We've got that valve isolated and shut for just those three fountains are, are taking offline right now and we dropped our numbers down to.
Um, so we're about, well, it depends on the day. Um, I'd say we're at like eight thousand, so about half of what our consumption is. Uh, I think we're about three thousand gallons per day more than we typically want.
And knowing that it's those three fountains that are having that issue, according to the maps that we have around the old piping, it stays outside of the pool service completely. It goes up around that north end and ties back in. So that's something we can just keep isolated, we can keep turned off, we can address that in the season, some along those lines. They keep, that's our light entry point, so that's, you know, it's onto the, the concrete. The second offender is a much more challenging one. It's the main recirculation, it's an eight inch line that goes along the south edge, go behind the, all the platforms for the swim team entry. Behind the diving board and that's where we're seeing the loss of the diving board. So there's a, there's two sections of concrete that have been cut up and have been replaced. We've asked Josh and everybody we can think of that has the history of those areas. Nobody can remember why those two pieces have been taken out of place. Um, where they were mapping is an eight inch line and it's only eight inches lower than concrete, so it's relatively close, not too hard to get to. But, um, that line is one that we would have to basically take that whole section out of service for about three to seven days, depending on if it's what we think it is or if it's a surprise to us. Um, we'd have to take the diving board out of service, take, completely dismount it and move it out of the way, cut out, uh, three to four concrete panels. Dig down, make repairs on the line and then reforge those back and then put the diving board back in. Which, for the diving board back in, we're gonna have to have curing time and everything else on those panels, so it's gonna, the diving board will be out of service for quite some time longer than what the, the edge of the pool would be. But that accounts for the other half of the loss that we're seeing. And you can actually see, when you go on a night and there's no foot traffic or anything, you can actually see water coming up around one of the seams right behind the diving board. So we, we know that it's coming up from there. Um, we watched the crack actually explode a little bit, the caulking has failed and it's separating out there. And, uh, Landon is convinced, I haven't seen any, I mean, we've been taking photos of it, we've been tracking it. He's convinced that the front edge of the diving with the main support, that just a stink a little bit. So that's a safety issue if it is. I said, we have, yeah, I don't know if that ever cracks that up, it's just his, his visible assumption.
So I just, the Shelby, my suggestion was if we're concerned about it or wash out or anything like that, and. Call G seven, see if they, see if they can do an inspection board, you guys scope it.
Know what's happening.
So we know what's happening, I mean, if they don't, if they don't have the equipment to scope it, I bet they know who does. They may prod it just to make sure it's solid under there. Um, they might. That was just a start to me.
See if.
An inspection, they'll make an inspection board and then after they're done, put a seal in, because they're gonna replace it anyway. They just seal it. That's who I would start with, companies like that, see if they can do that. And at least it gets us that if there's no wash, if we're not worried about anything, then we can continue till season's over and then we don't have any cooldown coming. We can shut something down, we can shut something down, but G seven may say, I would just, I would pass. See if they can board.
Line cut is a way of boarding.
Yeah, line cut's another one, I'd see if they can do an inspection.
Yeah, so it, really, I just wanted to get an idea, do you guys have any preferences? Cause really the options I see is we can keep doing what we're doing. Now that we have that one side minimized and, and just continue to watch what's happening and. Really the options I see is we can keep doing what we're doing now that we have that one side minimized and, and just continue to watch what's happening and remain open for the remainder of the year. The other option is that limited, probably seven day closure. Um, I don't realistically think that that closure would happen before August.
Well, yes.
Sweet, when school starts, when are they closing the pool? Because they always.
So they, it's open through laboring. And so that's.
I don't understand that, like, because everybody has to go to school and then.
So really, this, August seventeenth is our official, like, full-time closure date, and then we're only open on the weekends. So other options I looked at is we could just say we're gonna close early and August first is when we would close, and we'll just do it early. We could do it on the seventeenth and then just not have those weekends available, or we can stay open like usual, I mean, it's kind of up to you guys.
I would see if we can inspect it, maybe worse than I would see if we can inspect it, I just wanted to say. I think you're asking that for the decision.
That way you could, we could make a better decision if we need to close it.
Definitely.
I think it's, you guys, if it's a safety thing, you don't think that's a technical.
Yeah, right, right.
Um, if it's gonna cause horrible damage if we don't, you don't think that's a technical.
We can, the, the good thing about the diving board, the way it's actually mounted, it's not studs sticking out, they're bolt, they're nutted on, it's actually bolts that are going out. So we can just say, we can completely take the diving board out of the surface, take it off there, and just have the deep end like models, uh, as a safety concern out and remove that and then do inspections, or we can just do the inspection.
I'd love to do the inspection first before we do that, because we don't really know that that diving board is sinking.
There's, I mean, if you go look at the, the mains base, like, there's a lot of spider cracks around it, but it looked like they've been improvised sometimes.
That concrete shit.
I'll push it down. Especially with my actions.
They could just be, they could just be.
I mean, because we could have Corr come in and look at that and say, well, we already made it, it looks better.
Yeah. Inspect the apartment. And G seven will be quick, but they will drill, drill that, so an actual core hole that you can actually get some inspections.
Alright, next one that I had, I think, that I'm not gonna have, but I kind of have. Um, is vacant buildings registry. Um, so we got the language from, uh, our attorneys on Friday, Missy and I still have issues with it, so you guys don't have sample language yet. Uh, but as Missy and I were going through it, um, there were things that I think you guys can help inform us now or here, what our staff recommendation is, see if you guys agree with it, because then whenever I come back to you guys, then at least it's a little bit more put together. Um, so this is following up on the request to do a vacant building registry. Whenever we talked to council about it, um, the desire was to have this on residential and commercial properties. The proposed language that you guys will eventually see is the structure must be vacant for six months. That the city administrator or design need could put the structure on the vacant registry, really it came out, well, what if they don't? If nobody registers. Legal has told us that we have the ability, we put them on the registry and then they must pay fees, and if they don't, then they're a remit. And they will always be placed on by us. And residential properties, um, will only, this is our recommendation, would only be listed if an active code violation existed. Um, the research time for us to be able to determine whether something is vacant or occupied, we were really looking at it from a risk perspective, and what was most important to trying to figure out which ones were vacant or not. And for us at least, it was which ones we maybe, as council members, get a call on somebody not taking care of their property, and they would be in code enforcement. And so it was like, we looked, I mean, the code enforcement, if it was there, then we determined, is it vacant or not, and go on the list. But we would actively be trying to see how vacant ones are being maintained. Does that make sense? Okay, so, um, you guys had previously talked about requiring insurance on those structures or on the vacant properties. Again, this is if they comply, but it would be a requirement. Do you have any idea on a required amount that you would be looking for, and do you see that as residential and commercial or just commercial?
I think that to me was commercial.
That's kind of what I was thinking. I don't know either. I think some of the others.
I would say replacement, that's what I would say.
My dear, real estate question. So some of this is also, uh, they would have to have liability for neighboring structures, because that's the largest threat. And insurance might be able to have a better idea of what that looks like or what they feel is. And I'm ashamed, they're gonna, they're gonna go high, but. Yeah, they're gonna go high.
If you want to blanket, I would say a hundred thousand, but if you wanted to replace the value and have them do, you know what I mean, that's, that's the way I would look at it, too.
You know, one of the purposes of this is you're running, you're doing all the right things as a business owner, and you're running a business, and your neighbor is not. And they have a fire equipped, now you have, you, you know, your insurance hasn't applied to theirs, or they don't have insurance, it's now on you. Same thing as uninsured owners, owners, it's a pattern similar, it's a similar, it's protection. I don't care if you're less about the replacement value of their structure.
Right, it's about the neighbors. So you're more concerned about the liability?
Yes, I am most concerned about.
I didn't think about it, if you have, if you're between two places, maybe two, like you've got that.
I look at them like, I see the uninsured owners have liability insurance.
Um, one of the other recommendations was that each registered vacant building or property provide a local point of contact. I know, but that's something we've heard from you guys. Missy and I had a question, what constitutes. The more we talk through it, our recommendation was just to keep it at a countywide level, that was just easier for us to deal. Um, Jackson, Cass, Bates, Johnson and Plague in Missouri, and then Johnson in Kansas, based on proximity. We also have the option, we could do it as a radius, we could do a drive time map. Again, part of the reason was why we were looking, we started with a radius that I think was like thirty minutes, thirty miles, fifty miles, something like that, but once we were putting parts of Lafayette County in there, because we're like, okay, well, maybe one part of Odessa is within that, but once you make it Higginsville, you're way far away. So I just didn't know if you guys have any preference on what is your area of contact.
So I would like to know, I would look at the block of counties, and then see what, I would just curiosity what that radius is. When you look at those, what that radius is.
I know, she had, she had it all.
I don't have my desk.
It was on map. She had it on the map. Any other thoughts?
There was, just on that.
Yep, sure.
I guess my question is, what about, how are we defining, I want to make sure we can find vacant very well.
It was, we're still.
Because there was a clause in there about buildings being sold.
Um, like for active, like if they were being marketed. It's not in there right now, but I know the definition was in there from me, will be missing either, because it's all residential, like, so that's still. Well, okay, we'll get it.
The question of like the apartments that are upstairs and then the basements or the, the bottom part is at the.
You're right, that is a good.
So we need to clarify.
But you still have someone living in it or working in it, so.
I don't know, John, I mean.
No, I don't. They, they exit from the outside, they don't go through the park, so they're not in there.
And if I think back to years ago, whenever this was brought up, it was about practically interior recording, causing a fire hazard, but downstairs is not a part of that. Okay, I will put that out. Because I know we talked about it originally on like if it's a strip center, because sometimes you may have one tenant going out.
I, I look at that, you know, if half a duplex isn't. Fire department lights, that's not a vacant structure.
Right, that's kind of.
It's when you have a strip mall, there's nothing going on in that strip mall. It's a vacant property.
Quarter's old building is a vacant structure. I don't care that much, I don't think of vacant structure.
Yeah, that is, I agree. Um, what is the length of that registration? So again, what we're looking at is it can be vacant for up to six months before it goes on the registry. Our recommendation is to keep that as a six month renewal, just because we didn't want to like make it too big for somebody to, right, be selling in that time period. Um, we also were talking about doing that on a rolling basis. It would be easier for our staff to administer, if we set up our date of like, everybody must be registered by July one, they're not gonna have the time to do inspections. And so it was just keep it on a rolling basis, that way it keeps us for staggered enforcement. Also, I did forget to mention this one, that does come with, we'll do one inspection per year, not doing it every six months.
Oh, sand fire, just fire, just dust. I would like to try to. Then Missy have to call them if she has a question about something.
I think residential was X.
Yes, most of the time it's X.
So by doing the registry, that gives us some, uh, enforcement to, so that we don't have what happened at Western Auto to happen.
Issues that exist. Uh, so then the next one is what are the fees? As we were looking at it with a six month, every six months, residential two hundred, commercial seven hundred and fifty, and then penalties for non-payment, thirty dollars per month for residential. Whenever legal wrote this, um, here's kind of the, what delinquent fees, how we could recoup it if somebody cannot pay. We can take them to court. We have the ability to remit. We have the ability to withhold future voting permits, and, um, even to, it's written in there for the ability for those, all property, that was necessary. Again, whether that's on all of them, whether it's just on commercial, I don't know, I thought that was a strong one, but.
Just because I've known this to happen to somebody. When we do those delinquent fees, we do things like that, what happens if, and we will revise?
It is, yeah, I was like, it's in there.
Pass on the fire.
Um, it is in there, but actually the way it was written was that we would relinquish the lien. And my question back to legal was, do you really mean that, because it must be paid at closing?
For HOAs that I do, they, the new buyer, we don't relinquish the lien until it's paid. And we don't care if we face it, but.
Well, the seller usually, if they have a lien on the property, it's paid at closing.
Yeah.
I just would like the ability to be able to wait. The fees, if somebody new buys it.
That is the way it's written.
I would like the ability to say, hey, we have this new owner, to help, help the.
Yeah, that is the way it's written right now. Um, okay, so then the other one is would we be willing to consider any fee waivers? Here's kind of what we had come up with. Buildings that were in probate, knowing that probate can take a while, again, whether you want to break that on residential versus commercial, totally up to you, um, for not more than one year, from the death of the property. Buildings that are owned by the city state, federal government, or government agencies would be completely exempt. Um, and then buildings actively under construction with a, as long as they have a building permit and are making progress, up to.
I'm sitting, I was checking, I'm going on. I thought you were putting somebody in a delt.
What is happening? Sorry, the building, like, basically, what we were proposing was a waiver of the fee with an active building permit for up to one year. As long as they're making progress. Because at the end of the day, whenever we broke it out, what we're really looking for is the. Don't have to do any of those, just totally do that.
No, those are important, but, I mean, the permit, I mean, at construction, there's going to be someone there daily, so they're no longer paying, but. But.
You say that, you're acting like.
That's true. They do like.
That's the same, it's vacant.
Sometimes, sometimes that doesn't happen.
It's like the quarter code churches. Not one more brick is gonna put up for a whole week, like, somebody else show up for a week, but, yeah, I get you, yeah, no, it's, I like that idea.
So that's kind of where we are, are there other things that you want us to be considering, that you don't like?
Would you go back to the one about the building permit?
Okay, I wrote, buildings actively under construction with a building permit, as long as it's within one year of the date of coverage issue. So if it takes them longer than a year, then you're gonna start paying fees again. They'll still be on the list, we'll still do our inspections and all of that, it's just, are you interested in waiving that fee with seven hundred and fifty dollars?
I definitely like the probate one. Because that's.
That's, I don't know.
That's because hands are tied that.
That's kind of what we were thinking, again, they'll still be listed, it's just where I charge you during that time.
And I guess I would want to know a, a stronger definition of actively.
And well, I can tell you from past experiences, legal would love to tell you that's very easy to prove, but when I tried to prove it, it just didn't work.
Yeah, that, because I could go in there every three months and slap a painted coat on some, a paint. Or, you know, move some bricks around or whatever, and I'm not actively doing anything.
You really don't have to, it was just not wanting to make it overly burdensome for somebody.
You have to have a word, just like marks, you have to have a word, active, substantial.
Improvement, like you have to.
That's what it is, active, substantial improvements. You didn't go in there and put a new light switch cover on the building that's falling down on you.
I mean, we can do.
Or put privacy fence up, rent your house.
Yeah, so I was like, I mean, in some cases I could see them being like, oh, we got a building permit, right, like, just to. I don't know, we've gone back and forth, I don't have a preference, I really don't.
Well, I, I do agree with what you said a minute ago, I don't want it to feel like we're just sticking it to somebody, you know? But yeah, and I don't want us to be hung out to dry like we have been so far. I like that active, substantial improvement.
Good point, good, yeah, good job.
Hope that was great.
Alright, so let's go ahead. At this point, I don't have anything.
I'm very, very tired.
I, well, okay, I got one more, really quick. Um, so in the budget this year, I did set aside ten thousand dollars for council strategic planning. And what I really mean by strategic planning is determining consensus on what are our next projects that we want to work on. Do you guys want me to actively pursue that? I had it in my head, scheduled for the fall, I know we've had some work sessions to kind of talk about what some of those are, um, but I'm not gonna spend the time doing it.
I would do it towards the end of the year, if I did it.
I. My thought, my thought process was do it early fall, so that then they can know their form at this point. Because I think if we wait until the end of the year, it would be too far for them.
That makes sense. Year of the year.
Yeah.
Okay. It's still there in the year.
What about the building on Country Club at the golf course? I, I don't, it was the old, uh.
Oh, that one?
Clubhouse.
Either clubhouse.
There is a, oh, the old clubhouse or the maintenance shed?
The old clubhouse.
I don't.
It's all boarded up and.
They had new windows ordered, they took out the old windows, they did structure changes and that is sad.
Um, I will have to ask Missy about that. I know that the maintenance shed has a border zoning adjustment here in.
You've got the house, which is what you're talking about.
Or an altar, yeah, my, she just posted it.
You go to the pool, the concrete stuff, yeah, and then you have that little.
You have the, the two buildings here, they've got the big maintenance shed that we had, the little there and then the bad house.
Right.
Will, will just camp or not have one or whatever, it's kind of, there's tenants in there.
Something's getting solved, cause I have a email, the technicals.
You have the address, yeah.
It's not the summer.
Sixteen hundred?
Sixteen something.
I don't know the exact.
It's not sixteen hundred, it's fifteen whatever, sixteen something.
Is it odd or even something?
Guess what? If it's sixteen, I'm telling you on that.
Yeah, even something.
Sixteen and farther, because it's not that. Okay, that's what I had.
I got another call about dead animals on Sunny Highway.
I get two.
So, and then I went and looked and it was, there were two pretty good side raccoons that I fired. Saturday morning, I didn't know who'd call, I didn't know what. I, we need to do something to.
If it's going to potentially damage your vehicle, I'd call. Uh, most of the time, problems are the ones that sometimes come.
Is Dana not, she just does the live ones or not?
Pretty much, yes, pretty much.
We don't want her to go try and go map to map on me.
No, I don't want her to run, but I thought, man, she could scoop, I was thinking, well, maybe she can just go scrape them up and.
Well, I was thinking, cause you said Sa- whatever you said Saturday, I was just thinking, that's not the time that she works.
Right, yeah, that's, that's the, I mean, and I know, I know Parks and Rec are back to back, like, then, then I, then I was just trying to think.
Well, whose job is it ultimately? Is it, is it, is it, uh, probably Parks, is it Parks and Rec?
Who, who officially responds to that for dead animals? Stealing out dead animals on the road.
I don't want the official answer.
Yes.
Where's it at? Somewhere.
MoDOT, that's what I figured.
Planted?
No, I will say to us that.
Well, that makes sense.
Within reason, uh, we can respond out there. It's not gonna hurt policemen to throw a plastic bag and car or car and go pick it up. That's not a favorite thing for them to do, but not everything they're going to do is our favorite.
That's what I said, I said like, if it's going to damage a vehicle, then it's definitely.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't want animals, dead animals laid out in the, this is the right message.
Yeah, the message that you, and when they're, I mean, like, we have this fair going on, we have a lot of people coming in around town. We have dead animals all over the road. It doesn't sit there.
Well, they're really a bunch of them.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, there's been a dead cat and two dead raccoons for a week, I do know that.
Where at?
Oh, Seven Highway.
Seven Highway? There's one, the cat was around Delaware, close to Delaware, and then the raccoons were right in front of the rest of the shooting or office. And it was probably a mom and baby, it was a big, and it hit, somebody had hit her and the, you could see a rib cage. It was open, like it was gross. And so I was like, I, yeah.
I never could get any information on that.
Oh, yeah.
Off that Facebook story, I could find nowhere to go.
What Facebook stories? I, I don't.
But a big thing about, there was an injured pet, whatever, at Sugar Lake Goose and Animal Control wouldn't do anything. The city wouldn't do anything, and I could, there'd be anybody at Sugar Lake to tell me what the hell I would do.
Oh, there was a, it was a dead, or not dead, it was an injured geese, whatever they say, I'll share that. And, uh, they called, uh, wildlife. They came, they came and, they came and took it and died.
Right, but it was the, the, the board of chicken, I hadn't done anything about it, but they had to, I can't find anybody that knew about it other than the Facebook post. Until they hit Facebook.
Right.
That's what I was just trying to create reality, like, where did this, this? Seemed like it went on for a very long time, but I can't find anybody that knew anything of it.
Well, I don't know that we're supposed to do anything about it, like, ever, the wildlife people told us to leave them alone here.
Like, if it's making use of me, it's. And has there been anything done with the stop sign?
Nope, there yet.
Cause what, what's the process again, you have to, I know there's an ordinance, it has to be.
There's an ordinance that needs to be moved. Um, to put it on the stop sign schedule, but, um, realist, I mean, any other time, just let us know if there are changes that are necessary. Tony has to be the one. But Tony's really the one that makes the decision, yes or no?
Are we essentially just moving sign or?
It is. Well, it's, it's just you can't write any citations.
Right, then we can, we can fix that.
If, if Nick does eventually hold through, it will be put back there, so I don't know if he wants to make that decision or not.
Nick, no.
Oh, really, that's not, that's not exciting, okay.
Gotcha. The latest with Nick is he's moving forward to six.
Right.
Do you have one question for you, Nick?
Which?
Speed bumps.
That goes back to saying that Bible pro-.
What do you feel about that? For traffic, slowing down traffic? The humps, not the whole, the shallow.
And then seven, he has.
You're talking about the, the, the long, slow ones?
Yeah, slow down traffic.
I mean, I think they slow down traffic somewhat, I, I don't know what impact they'll have on fire vehicles.
But where's that?
They won't.
Just like the traffic circles, they have the drive over curbs and all that, it's not an impact.
Surprisingly, street trees can slow down.
Do what?
Street trees and bump outs are the two that actually slow down more than most.
I, I'm hearing more of a call for.
I live in, I haven't heard you, I don't, or no, I live in.
The, the two areas that I'm hearing a lot of is Lexington and Sugar Land.
And I'm here in Hunter Creek.
Country Club.
Hunter Creek just started a petition on, on their Facebook page.
You're just getting a lot of.
I will tell you, speed bumps are typically not.
Well, and it's like, the flailing is what I've always heard is a major problem. They'll, they'll be complaint, they would be complaining about the roads not being clean.
What you're saying, it would not be a bump, it would be the four, four blower.
Yeah.
But typically, if you're trying to slow it down, street trees and being one piece of it, is it like just kind of naturally, but closes you in a little bit more? And then, I don't see bump outs ever so often in narrow.
What do you mean, street trees? I guess I'm just being.
Basically, so most of, like, the trees at my house are like back closer to home. Street trees being like.
Between the sidewalk and curb.
Typically between the sidewalk and curb, but some places that's not possible, or like, so you put it, yeah, much closer to the roadway. So that then it creates like this illusion of feeling closed in and people actually go slower will not work. I don't know, I mean, that's.
We had the street tree in the middle of our road, and so we go around.
Around it, well, something like that is, that is a decent.
And it, it really does slow down, since unlike my son, so the residents have put boulders by their driveways. And my son was, he sneezed, he said. And he hit one of those boulders because it does, it do slow down and you do.
That is a, that's a good example of like an island that, basically, same thing at Mathis and Russell. They have this island, and so like there's a hazard effectively nearby that kind of causes it.
You say anything like, that sign has been broken for last four or five years, is there anything we can do?
That is a really good question. Um, so it's an HOA only sign?
Oh.
Let's talk to someone.
I mean, at least.
The Oaks.
The Oaks, that's what.
They don't have any impact of HOA.
No, they don't, I know that, but they need to at least pick it up, something.
I think that's the problem is that we don't have. It's also fast.
I think twenty five is usually too. Uh, Country Club, I think twenty five is too. I don't want to go thirty five.
I was a kid and it was.
It's probably clear, that's for sure.
We're ready to have it. We're ready to have it.
Yeah, we're good, yeah.
If I.
Oh, yeah, we got it, sure.
Second my finger.
Somebody gave me a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn. Your first session.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're done.
All right, I think the motion is in.
I know.
You can, you don't have to.
Yeah, a question I want to ask you. Oh, I forgot what it is. Could work on that app, I'm, I'm super excited to do that.
I worked on a bunch of them, most of them I found that I liked the best.
So what about this pickleball, uh?
Yeah, so I'm trying to do, uh, trying to figure out who can be like the coach. Leader. I've got a few people that I think are, to be like a, like a three session, three Saturday session type thing, or who can come in and.
Dana Parker, you know who she is?
Hey, Brenda.
She was a hundred.
Did you think about it? Would you?
Janet or me?
Thank me or email me? The week before the next meeting about that stop sign, so I can make sure it's. No two. Before I go through it.
Well, I need somebody to teach it.
I've had these verbal questions, and I have a man, I'm trying to handle it. But I'm getting emails, or I got an, or I got a thing, I got mails and sending. Tenant has a tractor and a bus.